The only weapon I ever use right here. Yeah, not on the glass. The only weapon I have here. Okay, now is the time to turn your cellphones off, please. And welcome to our school board meeting for Pasco County Schools Tuesday, October 1st. I'm going to read our vision statement, which is that all of our students achieve success in college, career, and life. The thought for the day will be presented by Board Member Alan Altman.
Change has a considerable psychological impact on the human mind. To the fearful, it is threatening because it means that things may get worse. To the hopeful, it is encouraging because things may get better. And to the confident, it is inspiring because the challenge exists to make things better.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for the record, as far as roll call, all board members are present. And I would like to ask for a moment of silence, please, for personal reflection. Thank you. Approval of a minute from September 17th and the workshop of September 17th also. I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, public hearings. It's 3.1, revisions to student code of conduct 2019 and 2020. And I'd like to open the public hearing on revisions. And I'm going to turn this over to our attorney, Dennis Alfonso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, this is to announce the public comment portion of the public hearing on the revision to the student code of conduct for the 2019-2020 school year. A notice of this public hearing has been posted on the district website and in publications and compliance of Florida statutes. Any member of the public who wishes to be heard to the revisions of the student code of conduct for 2019-2020 should have already completed a green speaker request card that you can get from the entrance to the board room or from the board secretary. When called, please approach the podium, state your name and address. For the record, each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak unless an extension is granted by the board chair. At this point, I don't believe we have received any green cards on this matter. Is there anyone who's present that wants to be heard on this proposition? Now would be the time to come forward. Madam Chair, let the record reflect that no one approaches the podium.
All right, thank you. Now, the public hearing is closed on the revisions to student code of conduct 2019-2020, and no vote is taken at this time. So now it's time for the exciting part of the morning, special presentations. And I'm going to call up Linda Cobb first. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, School Board Members, Superintendent Mr. Alfonso. Today, we have the honor of recognizing the Honorable Tom Lee, who represents part of Pasco County in the Florida Senate. And to do this recognition, I'd like to invite Deputy Superintendent Ray Gadd to the podium to present Senator Lee with legislator of the year award.
Thank you, and good morning. It is really my pleasure to introduce Tom Lee. His staff is also here. The FASSA organization sent me a script, and I summarily tossed it in the garbage can because I think I can talk about the senator without a script from FASSA. Although, I do want to make it clear that FASSA awarded Senator Lee the legislator of the year award this past summer, and he was out of town and couldn't accept it. So they asked me to present it to him in front of this board. And what I'd like to say about Senator Lee is I've only gotten to know him in the last two or three years, but never before have I dealt with a legislator, a senator, that is as good at listening as Senator Lee. I was up in Tallahassee last year during the session, and he heard I was in the hallways, and he texted me, and he said, "Come up and chat." So I figured I'd get the routine 15-minute chat. And an hour later, we were still chatting about policy issues and going through documents and pieces of paper, and he was listening to everything that I was saying. That said, that can be a dangerous thing, and I think he knows that. But he took that kind of time out. And I think there were some board members up there last year, and Senator Lee spent, I don't know, an hour or two hours with you, listening to you and hearing what you had to say. And in my mind, that's the real gift that Senator Lee brings to the legislature, is he's willing to listen to his constituents and have a civil discussion with them about things that we can do. In this past legislative session, he was extremely helpful in working with us on some construction issues, some issues related to charter schools. And even this morning, he's brought his staff with him, and as soon as we finish giving out this award, he's going to sit down with us again. I'm going to exit, and he's going to sit down with myself and some staff, and we're going to talk about some upcoming legislative issues. So it is really my privilege to give this award to a person who's kind of a legend in the legislature and a real gentleman to boot. So without further ado, I'd like to bring up Senator Lee. The FASSA Next Generation Leaders 2019 legislator of the year presented to Senator Tom Lee. Thank you for your efforts to provide a high-quality education to Florida schools.
Well, I'm not really sure where to begin. I don't want to belabor. I know you've got a lot of work to do here. I want to first thank you all for the work that you do in the community, your superintendent, Kurt, and Ray, and Wayne. You've got a great team here, and one of the reasons that we can listen is because you all communicate, and that conversation, you can't have enough of that. We have a lot to learn. You all have forgotten more than I will ever know about education. And it's important, in my view, for these conversations to be data-driven and be about the facts, not a lot of political spin from ideologues who have an agenda. But, you know, just what's going to help our kids in the long term. And I know you all have been set up for failure in many ways by the changes that have taken place in our society. And I don't believe this administration is going to fix education or the next one until our society fixes education. And the problems at home that are visited upon your school district and those in the other 66 counties in this state have created challenges that this institution was never set up to address. And I'm sorry for that, but you've become the social service delivery system for all the frailties in our society and all the problems in our families. And that's made it very, very difficult for you. But I think, you know, I grew up in the real world. I went to public schools, and I've got a real ordinary man's perspective of the challenges that people face and families face in this society and the role that you all are being asked to play in solving those problems. So I hope to be able to continue to have this dialogue with you. And Ray couldn't have been more honest about the support that I enjoy from my staff, Natalie Brown, who's here this morning, and Shruti Graff, who was actually a former staff director of the Senate Education Committee and has been just a wealth of knowledge for me on this particular subject matter. So thank you all very, very much. I appreciate what you do, and we'll continue to work hard to try to help make Pasco County a better place in which to educate kids.
Thank you again, Senator Lee. We greatly appreciate you and the work you're doing and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. And Mrs. Cobb, that was, thank you so much. Now, a public comment on agenda items, and so I would need any green cards? I don't see any.
We have none.
Okay. So we can move right along here unless there is someone that did not fill in a green card and still wants to, but I don't see any hands. Okay, moving along to United School Employees of Pasco. Mr. Don Peace, good morning.
Good morning. Superintendent Browning, Attorney Alfonso, Chair Crumley, honorable board members and district staff, good morning. Just a short update today. We have recently been at the negotiations table, and USP did receive the district two-year economic proposal. We are gathering information currently in order to form a response to that. We also have some other language that we are trying to work through with both of our teams. On a different thought, we are glad to be a part of the design teams and look forward to meeting later today to work together for our future goals. So again, I want to thank Leah Mitchell for allowing us that opportunity. I may take that back later, but... On a different note, the legislature is back in Tallahassee for the start of committee weeks, during which they will formulate laws that affect public education and all of us. I hope all of you will join me in letting our local legislators, as well as the rest in Tallahassee, know of the importance of properly funding public education and providing funds to fairly pay our employees. The governor has said he wants to do better to compensate teachers, and we applaud him for that, but teachers are only part of the workforce. All education employees need to be compensated better. We are asking legislators to get rid of any bonus plans and put all education monies into the FFP without categorical strings so they can be bargained for all employees. USP is scheduling public education advocates to attend the legislative session starting in January to talk to legislators on behalf of these and other public education concerns. We are one of the longest attending districts in this state in advocating in this manner and take pride in that. Please join us as we try to refocus our lawmakers on the need to prioritize our children and fund our future. Thank you.
Time for board member committee reports, and we'll start with Mrs. Harding.
I had none.
No committee report.
Had none, have one tomorrow and one the next day, but nothing last week.
I did not have any committee meetings either.
And I didn't either. And I do want to mention that the QUEST committee that I was on for years and that committee met for years and was led most recently by Rebecca Mussum. And she did a great job. And that is ended because everything is moving well and working well in that system. So I just want you to know that doesn't meet anymore. And that's all I have. So we're going to the superintendent, Mr. Browning.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members. Couple of things. One thing that I need to ask the board to do is we had some prior discussion about moving the October 15th meeting, which is an evening meeting, to October 29th. We are required to have a closed session on school safety. And I know that the 15th, there are a couple of board members out that day, along with a lot of elected officials. That is Senator Simpson's day, where he gets designated as president-designate of the Florida Senate. And I know that a number of folks are going to be, and it's not the reason we're moving the date, it's just that we have a couple of board members that are scheduled to be out that day. So in the other action item section of the agenda, I'd ask for an off-agenda item to move the board meeting from October 15th to October 29th, and that would include the closed session prior to that meeting. I believe that's at 4:00. We've confirmed with the sheriff that he can be there. He was scheduled to be here on the 15th. He will be here on the 29th. We'll have the appropriate staff in there, and we will go into closed session to review the information that's necessary, required for us to review. And then we'll also get an update during the board meeting, a public update as to where we are with our safety, but not all the gory details that's protected. So later on, we'll need to get that meeting date changed. The other thing I'd like to do this morning, are there any questions of me about that?
That will work for me.
That works.
Okay. The other thing that I have is I'd like Dr. Jones to come up from ARM. And she, on your consent agenda day, is our revised success plan. And I will tell you, it was my decision not to workshop the success plan because there weren't a lot of major shifts in that plan. So what I've done is I've asked Dr. Jones to come forward and just step through briefly what some of the changes are, what some of the revisions are. So you feel comfortable with that before voting out that item on the consent agenda day. So, Madam Chairman, if I may, I'd like to recognize Dr. Jones.
Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. I wanted to just provide really a high level of some of the changes, and Ms. Bowden sits on our district vision and success plan committee as well. So the changes that occur are usually as input is provided from our district vision and success plan meeting, as well as variety of stakeholders, such as our calibration and success plan meetings and other shared kind of forums that are typically always attended by pillar owners so that they have that feedback directly into their pillar. So some of the changes this year include the membership, so we have an updated membership. We have included an overview of Pasco County schools with some fast facts for 1920. We have replaced Steve Lukart with Ms. Harding. And then some of the additional pieces in the employee's success tactics, there are some changes to timelines, some updates to some of the different tactics. You'll see that data are being used a little bit differently. So some of the turnover and the exit data are being used in different ways in order to be able to collect information on why people voluntarily leave the district. There's some additional strategies around strategic recruitment. In connecting to the community, there are some additions around volunteer hours for athletics, the use of thought exchange, and our citizens academy. In excellence and student achievement, the pillar owner has changed. Some tactics and timelines have been updated. And then really kind of some big pieces, you'll notice that some of the theme areas have been renamed to more accurately define priorities in the district to include rigorous instruction, compassionate schools, and equitable practices. And then there are some metrics around that. So, for example, folks who are being trained in youth mental health first aid and some of those other SEL or social emotional learning strategies in the district. That is overall some of the major changes that we have that are being presented to you in the revised success plan that's on the agenda for tonight, this morning.
Any questions of Dr. Jones? She is so thorough. No questions. Madam Chairman, one other thing that I want to do, I thought Mr. Gadd was going to take care of this, but Mr. Gadd is with Senator Lee. And I would have great opportunity to do this, but we have with us today Dr. Kim Moore. You have read the newspaper that we are changing our focus on CTE and workforce development. And we were fortunate to be able to persuade, cajole, beg, borrow, steal. Dr. Moore from Hillsborough County, Dr. Moore and her husband live in Starkey Ranch. They're Pasco Countians, and I have saved her a drive to downtown Tampa every day. So with that, she's paying us to work here, that is correct. But I will tell you that we are fortunate to have Dr. Moore joining the staff. We are, and I've said this publicly, I continue to say it, that when we look at districts, comparable districts throughout the state, we hold our own with ELA and math. We do very, very well compared to other districts. One of the things that I have preached to our principals about and our staff about is, and I keep using this term, about leaving points on the table. And where we leave points on the table in the state's accountability system is in the area of college readiness and acceleration. We get smackdown with that. And so one of the approaches that we're going to take, and you've seen that the legislature has changed its approach with workforce development, they expect public K-12 to be involved with that. I expect the Pasco District to be involved with that. We are educating our future workforce. Most of you have heard that Moffitt has come into Pasco now. They're at the SunCoast at 52, huge, huge economic boost to this area. And it's about five years out, but that gives us about five years to make sure we're ready. So Dr. Moore brings a plethora of experience. She was served as the principal at Middleton High School in Hillsborough County. Just the industry certification numbers that she was able to produce in that school alone was worthy of distinction. And so when we have that opportunity to do the same thing at all of our high schools, and I will also, all of our middle schools, we will be holding our own. And I just wanted to have Dr. Moore stand, and we recognize her husband's with her today. So welcome to Pasco District. I'm done.
Well, thank you. This was the other exciting part of the morning. Thank you. We're so excited.
Well, I just wanted to welcome her as well, that we are welcoming her as well. And to add on to what the superintendent said, and I know he meant this as well, that we, of course, cares about the points, but it's not about the points, it's about the students and making sure that we provide them with the opportunities. We have some mutual acquaintances, and I read all your background, and I'm very excited to have you here. The connections that you're going to make with the business community are going to be wonderful for our students. So I'm excited because you seem to have all the background to make sure that our students have the rigor, but also have these opportunities in career. So I appreciate it. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you so much. We're very excited. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Gadd, no, Mr. Shibley.
I've got a couple of items for you this morning. The first is in the packet this morning for your approval is my recommendation to promote Kim Newberry to the Director of Human Resources, and Kim is here this morning. This is really a reintroduction of her. As many of you know, she's got a long history in education, from teacher to assistant principal. She came to Human Resources from Chester Taylor in her previous position as the senior manager for Human Resources. And at the end of a 60-person screening and interview process, it became very clear to the folks that were involved in that process that Kim was the direction that we needed to go, and so I'm very pleased to present her to you all this morning as the recommendation for Director of Human Resources. The second item that was put on the dais this morning, oh, yes, thanks, sorry.
And that's very exciting, too. Welcome.
Yes, we are super excited. The second item I put on the dais this morning, and I'm begging the board's indulgence, I had anticipated having an October 15th board meeting before the person that we hired to replace Kim would start, but with the potential of that meeting being moved to the 29th, I needed to bring to you the recommendation for Mary Martin, who we have offered the senior manager of talent acquisition and retention. Mary is actually going to be coming to us from Ohio, and so once she relocates, I will bring her to the board and introduce her to you. She is currently the Director of Human Resources for the Trotwood Madison City School District in Ohio, but has tons of HR and recruiting experience and was right up the alley of what we were looking for to fill the hole that was left when we asked Kim to take over as the director. So again, this is not normal, and I am sorry for the last-minute addition, but it was just something that I wanted to get taken care of today. And finally, just very quickly, open enrollment actually starts today for health insurance benefits for both employees and retirees. Over the weekend, Human Resources and Educator Quality held the Health Fair and had several hundred employees and retirees attend, so we felt like it was a very successful event. We made the decision to move it inside this year, which I think helped a little bit instead of being outside in the middle of September. But other than that, it is going to be a negative enrollment, so employees don't have to actively do anything unless they want to change their benefits. They will roll forward. So we are anticipating that it should be a pretty smooth and seamless enrollment period. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Coon?
Good morning. First, I wanted to share some breaking news with you that we just learned yesterday, and to congratulate my partner in crime, who is not in the room, but Lieutenant Troy Ferguson. We received news yesterday that the district is receiving a Department of Justice competitive grant for $500,000. So we're very excited about that. That's something that Lieutenant Ferguson took the lead on, but with lots of help from SSPS, Safety and Security Finance. Linda Cobb was involved as well, a real team effort to help with our threat assessment efforts. So I wanted to congratulate that team, and particularly Lieutenant Ferguson, on that. So we'll be sharing more with you, but that just happened yesterday.
Wonderful news. $500,000?
$500,000. So great news, and it's the second safety competitive grant in two years. So we're very excited about that.
Oh, my goodness. Amazing.
Thank you.
Clapping for that.
Thank you. And then I'd also like to ask Mr. Mike Gudy to come to the podium to tell you a little bit more about the Starkey K-8 Project and Theater, Library, and Cultural Center.
Good morning, Mr. Gudy.
How do you, the SSMI is on. Says HDMI is on. Something's happening.
You're going to have to draw air pictures here in a moment.
Okay, we're going to have to do it without it, which will be difficult. We're here this morning to talk about the, we're here this morning to talk about the school, but I want to tell you real briefly about the overall Starkey project is, without the visuals, it's a little more difficult. But we all have, at Starkey, it will have the school, which is the K-8 school. Along with that will be the Theater, Library, Cultural Center. We call it the TLC. I'm sure you've all heard this, that we're in partnership with Pasco County, so Pasco County Libraries and Parks and Recreation Department. That TLC will be a public library, but will have a dedicated use section to our students that will be separated from the rest of the public. So that will bring, that construction on that will start in the springtime, which will be finished in 2021. Along with that, we will have the shared use facility on that same site. There are some athletic facilities, some fields, and the gymnasium with a partnership we have with Pasco County and with the developer out there with Wheelock, where the public will have use of those facilities after school hours. So that's a partnership we have, you've probably heard us talk about the P4. A lot of y'all were out there at the groundbreaking, so again, without the visual, this is a little bit difficult to point out, but where we were standing that day is on the, is in the tennis courts near the TLC with the school was off to the one side. I know a lot of y'all were out there that day. So this is the point where I was going to start talking about the school and show you some more things, but that may or may not happen. But I do want to recognize a few folks that are here with us that have been working on this project all along, that are here with us. From my staff, Kate Ngant is the project coordinator that's been working on this. And this construction management firm is Wallbridge, and Tarek Sterret with Wallbridge is here. And Harvard Jolly is the architecture firm, and Steve Johnson is here, which I was going to ask to come up and walk you through this, but...
I can hold up the computer for everybody to see.
Might be a little small, so.
I do have a question while they're working on that.
Can you email it to us, and then we can pull it up on ours?
Well, I'll add it to board notes. No, to go through it now, maybe.
She can put it in right now? Because then we can just pull it up.
The question that I had while they're working on that, the TLC, does that fall under the county purview, or will they be?
We're the ones that are, according to the agreement, we're the ones that are designing, we're managing the design and the construction of it, but once it's complete, that will be turned over to the county. It will be theirs once we're finished, but because of the way the agreement is, we're the ones that are in charge with designing it and constructing it.
Okay, all right. So, but that's not in the scope of work right now?
No, we're working on it, but as a separate project. And we'll bring that back to y'all to see in the springtime.
I'm excited to see that.
Yeah, the entire process out there with the school, the TLC, the shared use fields, and again, y'all have been out there, the neighboring parks and recreation, they have some fields adjacent to our project out there. So the entire... So the entire project will be extremely nice once it's all complete. On the school, it is our, it's our first K-8 from the ground up. You know, everybody knows we operated one for a few years, but this will be the first one from the, from the ground up. It'll be 1,600 students and pending approval this morning of the contract, will start in October and complete in 2021 in time for school year in 2021, so.
So Mike, who, Madam Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Who owns legally the TLC? Is it the county or is it the district?
The county.
The county owns that?
Yes.
Okay. On our property?
It's our, it'll be, the property and the building will be deeded to them at completion.
Okay.
It's, the intertwining of the property are a little interesting. They will own the property with, we kind of, with our school and our tennis courts and some of the parking, we kind of wrap around their property.
Okay.
But that'll all be described legally, that'll all be separated legally when we're finished, so.
Okay.
I was going to say, it almost looks like they were coming up with something out there.
Yes, they're going to email the presentation to me and I will email it to each of you so you can follow along.
Okay.
So talk amongst yourselves.
Okay. Well, we'd like to thank you, Mr. Goody. Thank you. Thank you for doing this without visuals and we'd like to...
Can we circle back around? I mean, let's, go ahead, proceed and then we'll just bring it back up.
Come back when they get this?
Oh, sure. I just wanted to apologize. We're all mortified that our thing isn't working, so sorry about that to our guests. That's all I was going to say.
All right, I'll step back and y'all can say what you're ready.
Okay.
Okay.
Betsy, do you have anything else?
I'm pulling it up. No, thank you very much.
No, we just go around.
Okay, we're going to go to Mrs. Swenson. Okay, thank you. And Mrs. Hilton, not here today, so Mrs. Exor Nettles.
Good morning. I have some shared items with Mrs. Hilton, too, but I won't have her full list. A couple of things for you this morning, and I have, I have some photos that I'll share over to you in just a second. First, this is in collaboration with Mrs. Hilton because our Pasco e-School actually sent a couple of their instructors over to Pine View Middle as part of Deaf Awareness Week last week to work in collaboration with the American Sign Language students who take the course at Pine View Middle via Pasco e-School. So the lab teachers invited Mr. Gudifus and Ms. Lisa Rose, who are actually deaf instructors, they teach ASL, but they're also deaf, to do a Q and A and a cultural awareness with the Panthers as part of that week. As I said, it's International Deaf Awareness Week last week. But the teachers and the ILS, or the instructional lab support person at Pine View were so excited to see the students open up throughout. They said they were very timid and shy at the start, but it was amazing to see the exchange. And by the end of the conversation, the Pine Views Panthers were actually signing their questions to the two instructors. So they shared some photos and they had a really awesome collaborative opportunity for the students. Then second thing I wanted to share with you was all of the schools were excited to have the All-Pro Dads come out last week to the principal meetings and talk about the benefits of having an All-Pro Dads Club. Several of the middle schools turned back interest cards to the group, but Gulf Middle came in loud and proud with a photo. They actually have Rodney Bailey, a retired Pittsburgh Steelers player, who jumped in and volunteered to start the program immediately with Principal Riddle. So I just love the contrast in size there between Mrs. Riddle and Mr. Bailey. So we're excited to have that opportunity for our Gulf Middle Buccaneers, as well as many other schools who are going to start All-Pro Dads Clubs that didn't already have them. And finally, or not finally, I have one other thing in collaboration with Ms. Hilton, the Medal of Honor. I know you're familiar, last year we had some Medal of Honor recipients from the past join some of our schools, and as part of their International Annual Convention in Tampa at the end of October, eight of our sites have been selected to actually receive a visit from a Medal of Honor recipient as part of their ongoing professional learning. The schools that were selected were chosen because they have exemplified the character traits and have shown a commitment to the learning within their buildings. And we will have Medal of Honor recipients in town on the 23rd and 24th of this month, and they will be visiting Deer Park, Centennial Middle, Pine View Middle, Rushee Middle, Paul R. Smith Middle, Land O' Lakes High, Hudson High, and Wiregrass Ranch. And we can send you the exact dates and times if you'd like to be a part of any of those, but we're super excited about that amazing opportunity. And now finally, I have an introduction for you and a recommendation that you will see under the HR portion today, and I have Mr. Tim Light here. And Mr. Light, if you would please stand. Tim Light is being recommended to be the first ever principal of Cypress Creek Middle School, which as you know, is scheduled to open next August 2021 in Wesley Chapel. No, 2020, sorry. What year is this?
You're right, 2021.
Yeah, the 2021 school year.
That's right.
Mr. Light joined our county in 2007 as a social studies teacher at Wiregrass Ranch High School. He's been an administrator at Wesley Chapel High School, Wiregrass Ranch High School, and for the last several years at Cypress Creek, as he went over as one of the opening administrators opening that school in Wesley Chapel. He has his Masters of Science in Educational Leadership. He is joined here in support this morning from his wife, the lovely Nora White, who you also might recognize from our employee relations, as well as I'm sure other peers. Tim got to see an exciting thing because A, the summer rains brought the topping off ceremony late in the process, and B, we are expediting or making his appointment a little earlier than typical because the 900 students are already attending Cypress Creek Middle on the high school campus. So he was actually able to tour the school last week as part of the topping off and got to see the amazing progress of the Harvard Jolly Building. So it's looking great and we're super excited to have him and I hope that you will recommend him today.
All right. Welcome. I know the community will be excited, too. Do you have a question?
No, I was just going to say, I think you said you were going to share with us the Medal of Honor days.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be great with the board members.
No problem.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Powell.
Yes. So I would like to celebrate one of our elementary schools. Cody River Elementary was recently named as the 2019 Special Olympics Unified Champion School National Honor Class. There are only 24 Florida schools that made the list, so definitely a huge honor. And part of the note that was shared with me, it says, "A Special Olympics Unified Champion School has an inclusive school climate that exudes a sense of collaboration, engagement, and respect for all members of the student body and staff." And if you've been on the Cody River campus, you definitely get that sense and feel all over the place. Yeah, as soon as you walk on that campus. So definitely want to give big kudos to Cody River on that. And then I know we have lots of national days. I know it was National Daughter Day, National Sons Day, and I'm like, where are all these days coming from? But when we're celebrating something good, I say, I'm all for it. So this month is actually National Principals Month. And so with that, we just want to honor and recognize the hardworking principals at all levels, and we know just the hard job that they have, and they do it so gracefully and with poise, and they're juggling a lot. And I just want to take time to thank all of them for the hard work they put into our district every single day.
Thanks to the principals. Dr. Skanka.
All right, and yeah, and I just wanted to say something really fast because Lieutenant Ferguson is here, and you got acknowledged, but you weren't in the room for that $500,000 grant. And that is amazing, and for safety for our students, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you for your work there. Appreciate it. I apologize, Mr. Superintendent.
No, no, not at all, not at all. $500,000 trumps me any day. You have the email...
Yes, we got it.
You have the email with the PowerPoint. The other thing I want to point out is Mrs. Hilton is at 5A High School today with the state. They're doing a walkthrough, turnaround, a school walkthrough, and just wanted to make sure that you knew that she was busy working. So that being said, we're ready to proceed. Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to go back to...
Mike Goody.
The presentation with Mr. Goody and Starkey Ranch K-8 School.
Okay, thank you.
Whoever wants, else wants to come up.
I'll do that in a second. I'm not going to reiterate everything we talked about already, but if you have the site plan, the overall site plan in front of you, just to point out a few things that I mentioned earlier, is the, you see the school there, the white building, obviously that's the school. The yellow block that says TLC is the Theater, Library, Cultural Center that I mentioned, and the parking to the left of that on your, on your screen is the parking associated with the TLC. The soccer field, the track in the back, and the little baseball field, and the gymnasium are all the shared use facilities that I mentioned that will have availability to the public after school hours. And the adjacency of the TLC to the, to the first school building, that's our gymnasium. So there's a courtyard between the two buildings that the students can walk across during the school day to go to the library, the youth library part of the TLC, which as I mentioned, will be separated from the public during the school day. So that's the overall site there, and to the left of the picture, which you can't see, are where the fields are, the county parks and recreation fields. So that's the overall site. So that being said, I want to, I want to bring Steve Johnson up with Harvard Jolly and let him walk you through the rest of the school.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, please. Good morning. The board, Superintendent Browning and Mr. Alfonso. So you do have the slide in front of you. Mr. Goody went over the first slide. I'll go to the second. Is this a point? No?
Hit the spacebar.
Hit the down bar. The down, okay. We do this at home all the time between my wife and mine's computer. Okay. So the second image is an aerial photograph that shows the overall school, the TLC is off to the right-hand side, that dark green color over there. So what you're looking at is the primary parking lot for the school, part of the queuing line that comes up with that little circle in front of the one-story Advent Building. And then, so that's, what we have is three primary buildings around a secured courtyard. In the back, you'll notice the three-story classroom building. To the right is the gymnasium, which is positioned there next to the TLC. It also provides after-hours access. I'll review that and the plan in just a minute. And then to the left is the food service building, and to the further left is, are the bus queuing and parking area. So the third slide, so it shows the first floor plan, starting at the top left, that's gymnasium right there with the, the largest part of that building. There's a tech theater and a dance kind of lab space that's adjacent, we position that adjacent to the courtyard that's associated with the TLC that's off to the left. As we kind of go clockwise in that building, we have art and music, elementary art and music. There's a walkway that separates that portion of the building from the administration building. In the administration building, we have a single point of entrance, so, and I'll show you a three-dimensional ground view of that in just a minute, but folks, visitors will come up through a primary door, be checked in, and then released into the campus, the secure courtyard area. So the administration has all the office functions and the clinic area as well. Moving to the right clockwise, that's the dining building. Within the dining building, and also on the right-hand side of this dining building, that's access for before and after for buses. So that's kind of positioned on the site for bus arrivals primarily. And then on the top of that building, we have an engineering lab, digital design lab, and then the art and music for the middle school students. So we've, we've positioned the smaller feet, the smaller kids in one portion for their kind of core spaces and specials in one portion of the campus, and then the bigger kids in another portion. Central plant rounds out between the dining and the classroom building. The classroom building again is three stories on the first and second floors. We have restrooms, the boys and girls restrooms that are associated with primary and intermediate grades on both of those floors. Right now, you're anticipated to use half of that second floor. I'll go ahead and go to the second, or the fourth slide. On the second floor, you know, we've kind of colored it as kind of half-primary and half intermediate and then half middle school, but it gives you the flexibility for that kind of bubble enrollment that you may have to be able to use those classrooms. When we get to the third floor, then we have group restrooms that are outside of the classroom space, so, which is more of a traditional, as you know, middle school model. So it's all of the classrooms, all the instructional spaces are on the perimeter, natural light. In the core, there is a, at the top of each of those plans, there's an administration suite, so there's office, meeting space in there. The balance of the core has either, you know, mechanical spaces, a computer lab, things like that. And then on the third floor, near the bottom of the, of the screen there is, are the science labs. They're grouped together up there so we can stack out through the roof. If we go to the fifth slide, that's the primary entrance as you, as you drive into the school. We worked closely with Mr. Goody and his staff and the developer, Matt Call, and worked with the community to, you know, the kind of the direction was fit in. It was a prototype design, but we wanted it fit in, so we scaled down the entrance. We have a sloped roof. We tied in, put some color, splash of color at the entrance, but then kind of keep the colors in the palette neutral throughout the rest of the campus. There's some stacked stone on there, so it has a warm inviting feel for that secure single-point adventure. Go to the next slide, and as you walk through, if you've been allowed to come into campus, you go through that corridor onto that sloped roof there, now you're inside the campus. You're kind of looking back towards the entrance there and kind of get a feel for the scale, the size, as the students and staff come into that initial part of the courtyard. Going on to slide seven, then if you were standing there, kind of turned around to your left, you would see the outdoor dining area and the, and the dining building back beyond that. And then the last, I believe the last image is if you're in the dining, kind of outdoor dining area, and looking up at the three-story classroom building, and then beyond, there is a, the gymnasium that's beyond that. All of the buildings are connected with a covered walkway, so it's, you know, prevent, you know, that dry kind of walking connection when it's raining. And I think that's it. I'd just like to say that it's a privilege to be here today and represent the entire team of engineers and architects that pulled this together. It's a big campus. It's exciting for Starkey Ranch, for the community, for you. It's a district, it's been a privilege to work with Mr. Goody and the entire staff, and Wallbridge has been an exceptional construction manager. We've been lockstep from day one all the way through pricing, the different price points of the phases. So very successful team effort, and with that, I won't take any questions you may have.
I do, did any other board members? Okay, you go first, and then I will.
In the, one of the pictures near the beginning, is there, is the drop-off pickup line that's covered? Is that, or is that just a render? It really is going to...
That is covered. Yeah, it's pretty extensive cover because, you know, you have elementary and you have middle school. So we don't know exactly how the administrator is going to, you know, segregate those or separate those out. Typically, that is done.
But it is covered, so that's nice. That's really nice to have, because a lot of our schools...
They have opportunity to have more space to drop off, depending on how they want to queue. That's not covered, but a significant portion is covered.
That's great. Thank you. Okay. And I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but with regard to the TLC portion, that's the public and as well as the school district. And so I'm envisioning questions from parents. And how are we managing, and maybe Superintendent knows, I'm not sure, maybe it's Betsy, the time of who comes and goes and like when it becomes public and a barrier in between or all of that?
So there will be some...
You may have said it already. If you did, I'm sorry.
Not today, a lot, but...
There will be some design features for separation, but the agreement specifies that the school district has priority use of the use, of the youth section, so the section where our students will be. So we have priority use of that during their set times in the agreement. And so there will also be, we're planning for a staff member, one of our staff members to have an office there so that we can have someone housed in the TLC as well to provide that liaisoning back and forth between the two, because it will be where our students go for, where they normally go from a media center. So we do, we do have that, have had a lot of discussion with the county about how that will work and if someone needs to access the youth, the youth section during the school day, how that will work, and if our students are there, we have priority use.
Let me also add to that. If you look on slide three, which is the, you see the breakdown with the gym, the visitor's entrance, and the dining, and the classroom, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Johnson, but there's really two sets of locker rooms. There's a public set on the north side of the, of the building. If you look at the top versus Starkey Ranch, I believe those are the public facilities that they can use, showers, bathrooms, whatever. I believe those are the public facilities that they can use, showers, bathrooms, whatever. That's all cordoned off from the rest of the school. Now, I will tell you that the public's not, and I'll say this as a statement, the public's not going to be using the gym during school hours. I mean, so those facilities will not be available to the public until a certain time when we know that all the kids are off campus. Then we open up the public facilities, and they have access. They don't use the same locker rooms, what I'm saying, that the kids would be using. They are separate public facilities. But that's just one example of how we've tried to, to design this campus so that, this is the first school we've had the public-private partnership with, with the use of facilities. So Mr. Johnson and his team had to give some thought, and that's the reason TLC sits right outside that, so that we kind of keep the public stuff kind of on that end of campus.
Well, I just think it's amazing to think that a family could go down, and some of them could go into the library, and some could go over to the gym, and it just really makes it a family-oriented outing.
Kids are gonna be so excited to show their parents where they get to go check out books during the day. It'll be awesome.
I just think people need to know the whole plan of it. So that's why I asked.
Thank you.
Thank you. It looks great.
Absolutely.
Can't wait. Very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. So where are we? We're back to...
Expulsions.
We're back to...
Number six, expulsion.
Uh-oh, we're expulsion hearings. Mrs. Messelwhite. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Member, Superintendent, Attorney Alfonso. Staff, respectfully request approval of item 6.1, expulsion of male student at a chief center of Pasco.
Any motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Onto the consent agenda. And does any board member have any item you wish to move to the action? No, I do not. Nope. Anybody?
No.
All right. So a motion to approve, please.
I move approval of the consent agenda and additions added on the table.
Second.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion approved, including any addenda that was handed out today's, at today's meeting. Okay, so on to miscellaneous action items. 15.1, District School Board Policies Update, Policy 9150. I need to, I need a motion for approval. This is final approval.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
15.2 is a proclamation, Florida Manufacturing Month and Day. I need a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I didn't know if anybody was gonna read it. 15.3, proclamation, National School Lunch Week. Another very important subject. Need the motion, motion made by Board Member Altman?
Second.
Second by Board Member Armstrong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have the item, I believe this is where it would come up...
Yes, ma'am.
...to move the meeting to October 29.
I need an off-agenda item for 15-4 to move the October 15 meeting to October 29, 6:00.
I move to, oh, take the off, sorry, take the off-agenda item?
All right, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion.
Now we have the substance of the off-agenda item.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so...
I made the motion that we move the October 15 meeting to October 29, same date and place.
Second.
I mean, same time and place, excuse me.
Right.
And I might also add that there is a closed session at 4:00 that day as well.
It's an evening meeting then, right? 6:00?
Yes, correct. With the closed session at 4:00, the security session.
Okay. And I need a second, I believe.
Second.
Okay. So motion made by, did you get that? Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Our second October meeting will be October 29 at 6:00 p.m. with a closed session at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you. So individual board member reports. We'll start with Mrs. Harding.
Hopefully I can get through it. A little cough here. It was really, really exciting to, I visited a lot of schools this last week, and they were really focusing on that Starts With Hello initiative. And it was just being celebrated all over, so it just really was awesome. I loved seeing all the pictures and visiting and seeing all the different days that the schools were doing to promote, promote on their campuses. So it was really awesome. I also got to attend a fundraiser at the Pasco Fairgrounds that benefited so many different charities, one of which was our Lakouchi Boys and Girls Club. So I wanted to thank Commissioner Ron Mokley for putting on such a great fun event. I also got to visit Chaska Elementary School. There was so much amazing learning happening, and I loved how I saw when I was walking through the rooms. There was a lot of SEL, different SEL things that were being taught and the standards and how it was being embedded with, throughout the learning that was happening. Even so that a second-grade teacher was teaching writing, and they were kind of doing stuff, but they were talking about spooky stories. So it was really cool how she just kind of embedded that in there. So I thought it was really awesome. I also got to, I got invited to be a part of a fourth-grade classroom, and we got to transform into surgeons. And the students were dissecting text features in a text. So that was really great. That was really, really fun and engaging. I also got to attend last week the FSBA Policy and Governance Training with Mrs. Crumley. It was really informative and important, and I really wanted to thank Kevin for answering a lot of my questions. As that was happening, I was typing to him. So I really appreciate that, Kevin. I also got to visit Plato Academy and read a book about superheroes even have bad days. And it was really encouraging to me to see one of our charter schools implementing Starts With Hello. And so that was really exciting to me and see how they were embedding that with, embedding that within their school day as well. I also got to attend the Spring Academy's Gala. It made my teacher heart so proud because so many of my former students were on the stage and rocking their performances. And yesterday, I got to visit Mitchell High School, and I got to spend time in the AP Cap, in AP Cap Stone Room, and I learned how CNA cleans dentures, and I saw the end of a band class. And I got to visit the ELL training that Mitchell was hosting at their school. So that was really, really neat. And I wanted to thank Mrs. Schultz for taking the time for showing me around her amazing campus.
All right. I attended via to-go meeting, the FSBA Board of Directors meeting that they had to call. It was actually canceled during the hurricane scare, so we had to do this by to-go meeting. It was regarding the audit that had to be addressed. But everything was perfectly fine on the audit for FSBA. Also had a visit to Hudson High School, and it was very informative, and it was very exciting to see that, along with their excellent veterinarian career academy and the aviation career academy, they started a pharmacy tech academy this year. And if you talk about a high-impact job, that is the pharmacy tech. They are used in hospitals. They are used in all the drugstores, the, all the grocery stores that have pharmacies use the pharmtechs. So students that graduate out of this program are gonna be certified for that, immediately can go into that, to that job, or they'll be perfectly set up and aligned to go into a career of a pharmacy if they go on to college and extra education. So I was extremely excited about that. They've got a very dynamic teacher there that has a background in that and the business connections with that through her former job as a supervisor of pharmtechs for Publix. So it was just a perfect marriage. So I really enjoyed touring that school. Also went to Wendell Crane Technical School and welcomed the Pasco County School Citizen Academy. They're gonna get a wonderful tour of the school and all our offerings that we have there and at Marchman. It was just a pleasure to get a chance to see all of them and to thank them for their efforts. Along with some other district staff, last Friday, I spent about six hours in the training room during the youth mental health first aid. And so along with the superintendent and Mrs. Hilton, and it was just amazing to see all the good information that is in that package. I think this is something that all our staff is going to be trained on, and it's going to make such an impact when we have students that are having an emotional crisis. We're going to know how to respond and how to better help those students. And then also, fun thing, I went to Encote High School football game. It was great to see the school and to see the band and the students there enjoying. Next week, I expect a bigger crowd, because that will be their homecoming.
All right. Madam Chair.
Ms. Boden?
I attended a joint meeting between Beth Hess from the River Ridge High School New Teacher Academy and the University of Tampa Education Department's Clinical Ed Team. And we are planning to work together on some joint projects that's gonna benefit our students and hopefully recruit more to the teaching profession. We are gonna be spending a day at River Ridge with the NTA coming up in November, and I'll send that date to Dr. Isle. I also attended FSBA training, but I went to a different one than my colleagues. I went to Bargaining and Personnel, which is timely right now. So I definitely learned more about both those topics. And then I wanted to recognize, we voted on these proclamations at the last meeting, but today does kick off Disability Awareness, History and Awareness Week, and also October, so we're kicking off Bullying Prevention Month. And tomorrow, if we can take some time to recognize, it's National Custodial Workers Recognition Day tomorrow. So I just wanted to remind people now that we're actually in October. And I wanted to thank Dan Appoint for their Clear the Fog Assembly. I wasn't able to attend because I was driving for this workshop. But if any other schools are doing anything to address with their families or inform families about the concerns with smoking and vaping, I would love to hear about it and attend if possible. So thank you to them.
All right. Thank you. I attended a Howie in the Hills, the Governance and Policy Training put on by Florida School Board Association. And now I get to be a certified board member.
Woo-hoo!
Because I have made all of them. So I get the red ribbon to hang on my tag.
When we go to...
I know you're all excited when I wear that red ribbon and get it. So moving on to staff, last chance, any new business you forgot to mention? Okay, and we will move on to Mr. Alfonso, our attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had one informational item that I wanted to spread on the minutes of the record of this. There was a small issue that has come up involving members of the public who often communicate directly with board members. So this is as much as anything else for those who are present than anyone else who watches this on social media or whatever else. There are often circumstances in which individuals communicate with board members by email, which is fair game. But this past week or so, one of those individuals had copied a board member and said, "Oh, I've already spoken with this board member who said this or that or the other." And that sort of conduct is inappropriate. And it, as far as the board is concerned, our process for that is to identify those issues that appear to be potential sunshine issues. And we're just gonna have those, if board members get one that has a reference to another board member, what we typically will do is make sure that that goes to the board secretary so that it otherwise is information that's available to everyone. It can be either addressed in public to satisfy sunshine law, or there's a record of it to show there was no inappropriate conduct. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear for the record. And other than that, I don't have anything else, Madam Chair, unless you have any questions? It was regarding the dress code, I believe. That was the subject matter of the email was the dress code issue.
We didn't all get that email.
It's been forwarded to Peggy, who will make it available. It really wasn't anything inappropriate. It didn't go far enough, but it was just an opportunity to make that comment to say, you know, board members, if you get something that says, "I've already spoken with this board member who said this or that or the other," that's kind of a cue to make sure that we forward that to the board secretary. So that email could be available to all board members so that we don't have any sunshine issues.
Sunshine issues, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Time for a public comment on non-agenda items. That would be the pink hearts.